Uh, next item, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, uh, SP slash CAM, Milpon Holdings LLC, One Cemetery Street. Construction of a seventy-seven unit mixed-use development within two buildings, ninety-eight parking spaces and other onsite and off-site improvements. This is a continuation of the preliminary review of this project. And who is representing?
Uh, I am Mr. Chairman Adam Blank of Walsi Rosen for the applicant. We've, we've, we promised your staff that we would be relatively brief tonight. Although it's been a little while since, since you last saw us. So we've, um, as you know, this is a, a, a project at One Cemetery Street. I can just real quick pull it up. So you're in, there's Mill Pond. We've got one cemetery, the old bank building here and the cemetery in here. We've, we've, this was filed a long time ago. We actually had to withdraw it and refile because we had some delays. It's a joint venture with Spinnaker and MF DeScala. Um, and those delays really stemmed from, there's some changes proposed for the roadway out in front of the site, which involves state-controlled DOT roadway. So we needed to get DOT, some input from DOT before we knew sort of what, what the final project would look like and to make sure that it was, it was in fact going to be viable. It took a long time to get DOT to actually take a look at it. They've now done that and we feel good moving forward towards a public hearing. And, and we do have Greg Del Rio on traffic and he's going to talk a little bit about what, where things stand with traffic with respect to DOT in the city in just a few minutes. But that was really the obstacle in moving us forward. We think we can now move forward. So you're, tonight you're going to hear a little bit from, from Greg and he'll be the, the, I think the, the biggest speaker for you. But we would like to have Colin Growth Year from Bruce Beinfield, the architect, give you a quick overview over the architecture and some changes that have been made since the last round and let you know where that stands. As you know, there's a peer review ongoing for architecture. Mike Mitchell from Eckerson Design is the landscape architect. He'll also give you just a very brief update on, on, on where we stand with respect to landscaping. And then you'll hear from Greg. We do have, I think Vince, uh, I don't know. Oh, you're there. Vince, Vince Hines is, is on from Redness, the engineer. He's not going to present if you have questions, he can answer it. Matt Edvardson from Spinnaker can also answer questions that may arise. I think with, with that, we'll just move you right over to Colin.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Just to briefly overview the architectural aspects. The site plan is by and large unchanged. All the, the changes that are substantive have been having to do with the, the circulation on the, along the state roadway and the connection to Gregory Boulevard and East Avenue. We've mostly just been working to refine the, the design of the, the architecture and work to mitigate the height and vary the appearance of the streetscape to kind of achieve this New England aesthetic and really anchor this end of the green. So that's been the, the large effort on our part on going over the, the course of the, the aid as well. Well, the engineering work has been going on in the, in the, in the roadway. The plan is to still, still have the, the ingress down at the eastern end of the site. That's also the, the egress from the site for vehicles. And then there is an underground parking area that's screened from, from view, although there are some surface spaces available for, for residents to use. There's a small commercial tendency available.
Colin, are you able to pull up a rendering?
Sorry.
Are you able to pull up a rendering, Colin, I was saying? Yeah, great.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't click the, the additional zoom button. I selected my screen. Thanks. Um, so yeah, so this is, um, we've been working with the streetscape.
Hold on, Colin, you got the wrong document up. You got the agenda open.
Okay, what is going on? I'm usually good at these. Screen two, screen one. Okay, screens are reversed and share.
Much better.
Much better. Okay. So take everything I said, apply it to this picture and then we'll move on. No, just kidding. Um, so this is, uh, this is the view of the south end of the green as you come around. The corner of the cemetery is kind of here. This is East Avenue, if you can see my, my highlight there. And then this is what's seen as the anchor building. So that's kind of a mercantile or a hall building with a pediment and a lunette window and some, some dramatic high lasters coming down to the street. So we'd like that to be kind of a, an anchor for that corner. And then moving on down, we had these, this more or less a, a commercial strip anchoring the, uh, the south end of the green. We saw this as, I, I think I had termed these the three sisters in our previous hearing or presentation to you. And then we have, uh, the mansion and then the Italianate. And then there's a little outbuilding on the corner. So we've just worked to refine the, the detailing and the materials palette and how those buildings engage the street and also the scale and mass of my playing with the different roof lines, going between flat and pitched roofs and changing the architectural style. We feel we've achieved a varied composition and something that's going to benefit the neighborhood and really, you know, make this a, a place to be on the, the south end of the green. As I started to talk about what was in those buildings, we've got a, a commercial office space kind of in the outbuilding here. That's got on-grade parking that can, can service it. It's also visible from the, the street as you drive by. There's a retail person, um, tendency available on the corner of East Avenue and Cemetery Street, more or less across the street from Sweet Ashley's. So that is available. There's also a public courtyard that's accessible from East Avenue. And there's some, hopefully some on-street parking that's going to be provided there. There's also on-street parking along Cemetery Street. There is a portion of this, it's a private courtyard for the residents, but there is public access being provided around the building so that you could circulate through the site. If you were, uh, if this was a cafe or a retailer that, um, had, you know, needed the outdoor seating or even if just from people from Sweet Ashley's were coming over, they'd be able to use the, the public courtyard and then circulate around, view the Mill Pond and then circulate back out the site that way. There is underground parking around about a hundred parking spaces in total for the site, about two-thirds of which are underground, about a third is on grade. There is a little bit of resident amenity and overlook looking at the Mill Pond. And that's really typical unit floor plans where we have workforce housing units mixed in with market rate. Some of them are duplex units that do, uh, would be able to look out and potentially open out onto a, a roof terrace. The smaller building has three units in it with lofts and the commercial space. So that's the architecture in brief. Turn it over to Greg. Thank you.
Colin, do those, uh, the, the, the colors that we're seeing in that drawing, do they reflect what you expect the actual colors to be?
I, I don't know if the, um, the watercolor paint is exactly a match to the, uh, the products that we've selected, but we did provide a materials board that indicates the, uh, you know, the snips from the website of the, the fiber cement manufacturer. And we are hoping that those colors are going to be close. So we'd like to, to vary that, uh, you know, those colors and, and work it into that, you know, that palette. Historical New England colors, more or less.
Granted, there's, there's a, a review underway and some of these questions will, I think, come out of that. But the fiber cement board, uh, is that going to go all the way down to the ground?
Uh, I think it depends on the building. Some of these buildings, as the grade on Cemetery Street does, does taper fairly significantly. They will have, uh, like pseudo foundations and, and planters in front of them that help to mitigate the, the change in elevation. You know, typical detailing would be a, a water table board of some sort that would, uh, you know, receive the fiber cement boards. So that, I'd, I'd expect that we do a water table at the very least. And that would be a synthetic lumber that would be able to take weather at the, at the lower levels, if that's your, your concern there. But the, the idea is that these are infill development in a, a New England town.
Yeah, frankly, I'm less concerned about them being able to tolerate the weather than I am them being able to tolerate physical abuse. I've often seen fiber board or cement board kicked in and cracked from physical abuse. Uh, but again, we'll, we can get, we can get into that at the public.
There, there is a, just, I don't know if it gives you comfort with that, but a, a lot of the, uh, these buildings do have the planters in front of them. So there's not a direct public access in front of them. So it would be a little bit more difficult for somebody to, um, to just kick it or wag it with something as a passerby, you know? So it would, they'd really have to climb up on a, a planter and give it a kick if they really wanted to, uh, to damage the building. And there's also somebody living on the other side of that wall, so they'd probably be upset.
Thank you.
Has there been any talk with the city on the back parcel? I know on the plans, there's the back into the Mill Pond, a big potential connection there.
Uh, I'd kick that to, to Matt or, or Adam in terms of how that's being handled. I know we've discussed it, but currently we're, you know, that's, that's on the plan as, as a potential future improvement. And we're, I know we're willing to connect to that if it, if it goes forward. So there's still some.
There hasn't been, I think, I would, I guess I'd phrase it as there hasn't been too much meaningful conversation on it. But on the other hand, we have prepared an easement that relates to that, that access to that for the city with, with the conditions. And we've, we've shared that with, um, the law department as well as your staff. We've, we've, I think, heard a little bit of feedback from your staff, not from the law department yet. And, um, but that, that, that's a open discussion topic.
Thank you.
And, and Colin, if there's more questions for Colin, great. If there's not, I think before we jump to Greg, if Mike can just do a minute or two on the landscaping.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Mike Mitchell, landscape architect with Eckerson Design. You know, since you guys have seen this project previously, I'm not going to, um, you know, go through what Colin has highlighted. But what I will share is, um, you know, we've developed a, a series of renderings to sort of highlight the amenity spaces around the building, specifically up the backside. And, um, in reference to the Mill Pond sort of design that's on the plans currently, it's not something that, um, we, you know, we sort of gestured it in as a potential connection. So we have a, a 3D view to show what that future connection could look like. So this is a look on the backside of the building. This is the public space that's sort of, um, like Colin said, by the mercantile building. So it's envisioned as sort of a gathering spot, um, some green space, some sort of structured seating. Um, and this is this public access connection going down towards Mill Pond. So a series of overhead catenary lights. Uh, and behind this, we've got a sort of a perforated metal screen that defines the edge of the public space versus the, the resident amenity space. So this is just another view looking towards the, uh, the public space coming down East Avenue. Like I said, there's some, there's some green space and built-in sort of seating that sort of defines this area. Um, and also, you know, a wall that defines the grade change as well as some planting to screen adjacent parking. Just a view towards the interior of the amenity space for the residents. Envisioned as some sort of loose gathering spaces, um, some lodging areas with an overhead pergola shade structure and an option to do some, uh, some outdoor movie screenings. So the view looking back towards Mill Pond, you see there's a, a gate opening here, uh, a view towards Mill Pond. Like I said, we sort of gestured in, we'll see in a subsequent slide, this, um, Mill Pond sort of potential programming and design that would be, you know, future designed by others. So here's an overhead view looking towards, um, down towards Mill Pond. This resident amenity space and this transition sort of passeo that, um, is lit overhead with the catenary lighting and going down to a, a grand staircase, which connects to the back, backside of the building. So here's that, that view looking down from that grand staircase towards, uh, you know, a potential sort of overlook space that, um, you know, put a while, um, people to recreate, you know, visual connections towards Mill Pond and, um, and, uh, and back towards the site. And that's it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yes. Um, will there be any signage that indicates public access?
That's a good question. Uh, public access, I mean, you know, the Mill Pond design that, you know, we're showing is, is really something that would be designed by others. You know, what we're trying to do is just marry up to a line that would be, um, future access. But I think as, as part of that, there, there would be some sort of delineation as to how to get to it, right? Because it's not visually apparent from the edges that it's necessarily down there.
Yeah, and there, there is, there in the, for the public access portion, there will, there will be signage. And it, and there is in the, I think the easement language, it's, I don't know if it's nine to five or dusk till dawn, but there are some, some hours that are there and some, some limitations for the use of it by the public. But in general, there, there will be that open access area to the public. It's just the, the, the sort of, I'll call it a dock that's shown out on the city parcel. That's a, if the city builds it kind of a thing, but we, we are committed to building the public access around our site.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
If there's not more questions for Mike, we'll let Greg give you an update on traffic.
I have a couple of questions, Mike Muschak here. Fellow, fellow landscape architect, so speak your language. The, uh, the natural habitat that's behind there that's currently invasive, fragmites, et cetera.
Correct.
Is it in your plan to do some ecological restoration of that? I realize a lot of that is in the public, on the public property, but, um, do you have any plan to do that? And.
Right, there's.
Is, and, and two questions I'll ask him at the same time and make it easier for you to answer, I guess. The staging area for any further construction, uh, if it would have happened post-construction of this project, if this were approved, uh, has there been discussion in terms of staging area or access across the private property to get to the, uh, to the construction of this future public amenity?
I'll start with your, your second question first. No, there hasn't been discussion of that. You know, it's, it's really an infancy in terms of, you know, what that would look like and who would, who would, you know, design it and ultimately fund it and build it. So that's sort of, you know, that's that ongoing evolution of what that design would entail and, you know.
Yeah. Not to interrupt, but I think we'd all agree it'd be a lot easier to build that before the project was built.
Agreed.
Uh, Mike, the, the, the easement language does have language in it confirming that the city would have the ability to access for construction on their parcel.
Thank you. I didn't get into the weeds on that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and I'm not.
Sorry for the pun.
Look, if the city, if the city can come up with a plan and to, to get something that's, that's, there's some, they'd have to go through a permitting process on their own that, that's pretty substantial to do something there. But, but by all means, if they can do it, we'd love to stage it together. That would be better for us and for our residents, you know?
Yeah.
Truthfully, I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that will happen.
Okay, so back to the ecological restoration.
Right, so, um, to answer the first question, yes, um, you know, anything that's really on-site, you know, back behind this line, you know, property line, you know, a lot of this, um, right now, you know, even up to this bulkhead, that's, it's, it's essentially all paved right now. So, you know, what's there, you know, um, from the edge of the paving, which is essentially, you know, the edge of the rain garden right now. You know, you definitely remediation, you know, more of a native plant palette, you know, stuff that's really meant to be there. And, you know, obviously removing all fragmites and things that are non-natives and also, you know, blocking views, right? Fragmites gets very tall, so, you know, it's providing this, you know, circulation around the site. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, the planting that we pick and, you know, develop for this area. One is, you know, provides the rain garden, you know, sort of water, water quality control. But two, you know, is appropriate and, you know, we keep the planting lower. So, you know, those views and this, you know, great amenity for, for the surrounding areas is really showcased.
Yeah, I guess it would just be ideal to have a smooth transition between the public and private land there, uh, in terms of planting plan eventually. Yeah, I realize it's pre, I realize it's premature to do that since there's no plan for the public's property yet.
But yeah, that's, that's, that's the intention. Yeah. You know, remove all the invasive, so, you know, it's pretty apparent, you know, when you go down there now that, um, it's a, it's a huge, um, huge swath of fragmites.
And have a restored environment that is, uh, more beneficial for wildlife.
Correct.
And nesting birds and wading birds, et cetera.
Exactly. And, you know, just even, even removing the impervious surface down here, you know, as the low point on the site, you know, and the rain garden is going to help tremendously in terms of habitat creation.
I've, I've been down there after a rain and everything in that parking lot goes right into Mill Pond.
Exactly.
Oil, grease, garbage, trash, everything just washes right in. And, um, so, uh, anyway, thank you very much.
Yep.
Greg?
Hello, um, let me get my screen share going here. I believe I've got it. Let me know if you can see the aerial.
Yes, we can.
Okay, Greg Del Rio, professional engineer, State of Connecticut, uh, traffic engineer for Horstie and Hanover. So, uh, just by way of quick background, um, you know, we did submit a, a full traffic study. The city is reviewing that now. The draft study shows, uh, no traffic impact, no changes in level of service, uh, to the surrounding streets. But what we're really here today is to focus more on some of the design treatments and particularly, um, the changes along Cemetery Street itself and the intersection with Gregory Boulevard and Cemetery Street. Past few months, we've been coordinating with the city, TMP and, uh, planning as well as, um, Connecticut DOT, um, their local District Three office as well as, um, the main office with the different departments, traffic engineering and highway and design in, in particular. So, uh, just real quick, existing conditions, um, you know, down here is, is, is the site. There's three curb cuts today. It will be reduced to just one in the, in the proposed development. Cemetery Street is currently two lanes without any parking or bike lanes or other facilities and a sidewalk on, on one street. The other thing that I'll just call out is really the whole area around the cemetery is not very pedestrian-friendly or walkable. You can see that there are no, uh, crosswalks sort of connecting across East Avenue, Gregory Boulevard or any of the intersections in, in, in the study area and the influence area. So that's just a real quick, um, sort of give you a little bit of context. I also want to point out, you know, the church in the corner, because that comes into play in this driveway over here, just again, for context. So first thing we'll do is just very briefly talk about, um, you've already heard about the program over here to the left. A hundred and three parking spaces. What I've added here is just the range of peak hour trips, vehicle trips, that is. You know, there'll also be pedestrian trips. We are close to the train station. We are close to other uses. But we're estimating thirty-five to forty-five new vehicle trips. Again, here is the new curb cut. It's reduced from three down to one. And roughly the thirty-five to forty-five vehicle trips is about a sixty, forty split coming in and out in any particular peak hour. And again, that's not all day, that's just during the peak hour. And the reason for that split is because it's not all residential, that the retail and the office tends to peak in the opposite direction of, of residential trips. So not an overwhelming, um, amount of traffic generated from the, from, from the, um, from the development. However, there are trips being, being generated, obviously. I'll then go to, again, for context. So the city has proposed a master plan, um, pedestrianize and improve the walkability and bikeability and, and calm traffic around the area. Uh, and that's reflected here in, in this, um, concept of, of what the future of the area is going to look like. This is happening with or without our project, for the most part. You can see that there's some pedestrian connections through the existing triangle islands. New striping, um, crosswalks being added all around that, all the intersections. Some of the major changes is a proposed sidewalk, five feet wide, going around the cemetery to help improve circulation from all sides. With some crosswalks getting to that sidewalk being added, right? So that you can get through without having to walk the long way around. I'm just calling out the driveway again because that comes into play with some of the options. In addition, you can see some of the green spaces that are being proposed to sort of extend the curbs and add some greenery and plazas and curb extensions to shorten some of the crossings. And again, add to the calming of the traffic. And then the, uh, the last one I'll mention is, um, Rogers Square currently is one-way counterclockwise. And the proposal is to just change that direction. So all of this has been reflected and incorporated into the traffic study that we prepared. And it reflects, you know, all these changes. The other thing I just, the reason I put these insets here is to show that, you know, currently the curvature and the radius over here for, and again, this is a state road and we do get large trucks through here. At times, you can see the wear and tear that the large trucks, when they track over, are not quite making the full, uh, turn. So you'll see in the design that we accommodate, um, you know, this, this issue to improve circulation and not wear and tear on the potential new sidewalk. For example, it's being proposed over here. So that's a little bit of context for what the future is going to look like. And then our project comes in and fits in with all of those changes. So I'm just going to talk about Cemetery Street in front of the site very quickly. Colin hit on a couple of these issues. There will be now, um, curbside parking along both sides, East Avenue and Cemetery Street. The big change is narrowing Cemetery Street from two lanes down to one lane. And when we sat with Connecticut DOT as well as the city, um, so far, um, you know, there's been no objections to that. The state does want to see some of the traffic analysis and some of the traffic volumes. But, you know, at, at our meetings with them so far, they've been comfortable with, with these changes and the reduction from two lanes to one lane. If you think about it, it really is only being fed by one lane at a time. This East Avenue right turn is very, very light. Most of the traffic is coming here and being throttled by that approach, which gives us the opportunity then to put in a buffered bike lane as well as, as the parking and add the, the crosswalks, as I mentioned before. And we're showing the, uh, the five-foot concrete sidewalk around the cemetery that the city is proposing in their, uh, proposed master plan. The real change is, and that's why we call it alternative one and alternative two. So alternative one, um, was developed and proposed by, by the applicant and, and the consulting team in order to sort of, uh, optimize the function of this new curb cut in a new location here. So if you can see in the background, I'm tracing out here is the existing island. And, and that was the issue, right? You can't come out and then just join traffic and go on your way on Gregory Boulevard, which is where most of the traffic would be destined to. You would have had to make a right and then, of course, there's really no way to make a, a U-turn and you'd be sent into the neighborhood, so that just wasn't working. So we had to come up with a way to, uh, to sort of make this work. And I'll just briefly say, we did look at other access points and because of the grading and because of the, the architecture and everything, it, it, it's sort of, this was the first place that it could be put. And then you don't want to go too far along this way because then you start to have sightline issues and really, you know, the same in and out type of issues that you would have had here. So this is sort of the optimal, um, location for the, for the curb cut and the access. And that started, uh, us looking. And that started, uh, us looking at potential design treatment and changes. And it also gave us a, a chance to address this, um, deficient, I guess I'll call it, uh, radius that, and, and the truck tracking issue. So what, what this sort of, um, the preferred alternative for the applicant is showing is sort of just a normalized, you know, four-legged intersection, but it's really only, you know, um, two directions, right? You got the, you got the traffic coming down Cemetery Street and then either continue to Gregory or they go around as they do today to, um, go northbound on Gregory Boulevard. Um, they would maintain the same operation, yield sign and two lanes. Gregory Boulevard would continue to go through. This side of the island really does not get touched. It's just a, a shrinking of the island. And then what we would do and, and what's being implemented more and more in these sort of situations where you want to calm traffic, but you also have to accommodate the larger vehicles and the tracking is it would be delineated out here for, for, you know, most of the traffic. And then this sort of, you know, um, textured pavement or striped pavement would allow for the trucks to track without damaging or hitting a curb. Um, so that's part of what's being shown in this shaded area. Uh, the church access remains the same as it does today and is, with this alternative is, is not really impacted or, or comes into play. Um, and again, we have the bike lane going through, um, and we have sort of, you know, uh, standard sightlines. You're really only looking to the left as far as exiting. And you're waiting for the vehicle to either make the left or continue down Gregory Boulevard. Uh, I think that, um, and then we have the two lanes continuing up Gregory Boulevard as you do today in this alternative. Uh, the second alternative, so, so when we put this in front of the city, um, they came back with some suggestions to, you know, even further try to calm traffic. And the idea was to sort of, um, create, if you can envision, almost a roundabout type treatment. It's almost like a quarter of a roundabout, right? Where this would be the exit and the entrance to the roundabout. And it brings the, uh, intersection further east. And what that does basically is, you know, slows the traffic a little more as they come around this turn. The yield sign would now be switched from the Cemetery Street to the Gregory Street approach because of this new treatment. Um, and as you exit, you're not really coming straight across in this one. You're sort of, it's sort of a blend and a mix. So you're, you're coming out and you're either continuing to make the right on Gregory or you come out and you just join this, the, the roundabout sort of treatment and come around as a single lane. Um, the other difference is, and again, as part of the traffic calming where we had two lanes coming out, you know, this one further slows traffic down because it's now merging traffic into one lane until Emerson, and then it widens back out to meet the existing condition, two lanes to allow the queuing, uh, for the, for the, for the signal, uh, further to the north. Um, and then there's the, the driveway entrance to the church, which, you know, it, it just impacts a little bit the design. This is, uh, sorry about that, that shouldn't be there. Um, and this is showing where the existing driveway is. It just comes a little into play. Again, it's not a very busy driveway. Um, but it is something to consider in the overall assessment of the, uh, of the overall design and the options. Other than that, from this way to the west, it's the same. And it's just the sort of design treatments on how these two come together and meet the, uh, driveway and how traffic flows, uh, through the new intersection. Um, otherwise, I think, uh, I've covered most of the differences. Um, we did get, have a meeting last month with Connecticut DOT. Um, there were no fatal flaws identified so far with, with either of these. Uh, they were okay in general with reducing two lanes down to one with the adding the bike lanes throughout. Um, with this sort of, you know, apron treatment that we're providing for the larger vehicles. Um, and now they, you know, we didn't have enough time to fully develop this as we did, you know, this in, in CAD. Um, so Redness and Me and Vince is, is in the process of putting this into more of a, of a real design so that we can see all the dimensions, make sure everything works. Um, and then we'll be resubmitting and, and revisiting, um, Connecticut DOT and, and the city as well to, you know, further assess these alternatives. But, um, for now, both of them have been shown to be more or less, as I said, acceptable. It's just which one is really preferred and, you know, will anything else come out once we finish this design to show the, the, the full.
And Mike, Mike, uh, Greg.
Mike, Mike Mueschak here. I'd like to, uh, ask a question.
Sure.
If I can. Uh, I see both, I see the, uh, advantages of both alternatives. But an alternative to the one that's up on the screen right now, the bike lane for a cyclist going, uh, north on Gregory from Cemetery, let's say, making that left around that right there. You, you could continue the bike lane there because you sort of add, the bike lane is, you're assuming cyclists are just going to go south on Gregory. But a lot of the cycle, cycle, cycling traffic will, uh, I, I would imagine would also want to go north on Gregory there. So you would have a bike lane. You're just showing a single dashed line. I think it's easy enough to just continue a bike lane across the intersection there. It would have to be, um, you, you can do it as a green lane or, you know, or, uh, uh, cat tracks they're called, you know, I don't need to tell you that, but I mean, for, for the public's benefit. Uh, a, a sort of cat tracked dashed line that would at least indicate a space for a cyclist to go. Um, you're crossing traffic there. How that's going to be handled is, is above my pay grade, but I mean, right now the bike lane is not continuous around the cemetery and it should be in alternative two. Basically what I'm, what I'm saying, just keep that in mind when you're.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I realize you said you're not, you don't have the details worked out. It was just, as a cyclist and someone who's been advocating for, uh, bicycling safety for a long time, uh, I, I always, we have an issue on Strawberry Hill where, you know, bike lane just kind of goes one way but doesn't continue under the bridge, south on Strawberry Hill, uh, over to Winfield. And it's always been a, a weak point in that system, I think.
Yeah, good comment.
You may not know what I'm talking about, but, uh, other people.
I'm familiar.
Anyway, thank you.
Uh, lo- logis- logistically for traffic and for your, your sort of next steps, um, it, it will be our hope that we'd go to a public hearing in the very near future. Um, we are waiting on, um, you're, you had a peer review on the traffic, uh, that, that, that's obviously had input, which actually I think helped come up with alternative two. Um, that we're waiting on some final comments from, but, but pending those, if, if all goes well, what our hope would be, would be that you folks approve the project, of course, um, but, but that, that it be approved with a preferred alternative one or alternative two with a fallback that in the event that DOT ultimately says they will not accept one of those, that we, that the approval is still sort of valid with the, with the alternative as the fallback. But obviously you, you would certainly be weighing in on what, what your preferred course was. Again, that's our, that's our hope.
Okay.
So, um, I, I have a question too. Thank you, Mike, for bringing up the, the subject of the bike lanes because that was first and foremost on my mind. Um, the second thing is pedestrian crossings. So, um, I take this route on my way to the beach and it is not very pedestrian friendly. What is going to happen when, when this, um, project is erected and making a way for pedestrians, not just cars?
Um, right, um, so let me go back because I think this shows the overall improvements. Um, so again, you know, the full, you know, this is a concept, signing and striping hasn't been fully developed, but you can see, you know, currently where there's no crosswalks at all. For example, if you were parking in some of those new curbside spot spaces, you know, you can still cross now and, and we added some parking capacity, for example, that.
Um, you can cross now with your life in your hands because the traffic is moving very fast. So.
Correct.
I love the fact, I love the, the diagram that you show where the traffic is slowed down.
Right.
And that's good for the cars, but, but what's, you know, how, what are the, what are the designs for people, for pedestrians?
Um, right, so the, the sidewalk treatment that's going around the, the cemetery itself is for pedestrians and then these crossings that are going through the islands to help get from one side to the other. So you, you're, you're, you're not crossing two lanes of traffic at one time and trying to look in both directions.
Mm-hmm.
And, and if you think about it, each one of these crossings only requires the pedestrian to look in one direction um, as far as oncoming traffic goes. And that, that, that happens at this island as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so those are really the major, major improvements. Um, you know, the, the crossings are, are put in places where the sightlines are in, um, good sightlines, so you can see the oncoming traffic and the traffic can see the pedestrians more importantly, right?
Right.
Um, so yeah, that's, those are the circulation improvements, basically.
Okay, so there's two.
Uh, yeah, well, basically we're bringing them through the islands and making that connection.
Any way to insert one on, on going north on your map?
Um, there was, are, are you talking about across Cemetery Street?
No, I'm talking about, um, East Avenue.
Okay, somewhere up here?
Yeah.
They, well, that's, that's outside of our sort of design area, but the city, the city is showing the improvements here.
Well, thank you for that.
Yep, yep. And they, yeah, they're also widening that sidewalk there a little bit to allow for queuing space. Um, and this, this is actually a bulb out here, a curb extension to shorten the crossing. You can see it here as well. You can see the, the, yeah.
And Greg, those, those roads along Cemetery is getting narrowed, right?
Yes, yeah, the lanes are getting narrowed and delineated. You know, today it's sort of just, it really needs a fresh coat of paint at a minimum, right? But that's, that's correct. Just the bike lane itself is going to narrow the, uh, the travel lanes, which has the effect of calming and slowing traffic. Yep, and, and so do these, uh, curb extensions, right? That narrows the visual aspects of, of the roadway.
But Greg, just to, to, just to make sure everybody on the commission's aware, this plan in front of everyone is, this is the city's master plan. We, we did not develop this. So the off-site improvements outside of the immediate frontage on Cemetery Street, uh, East Avenue and a little bit over onto Gregory are, a- a- anything outside of that frontage is not really within our project scope. Um, so.
Yeah, our changes.
We're showing that our, our, our changes are compatible with the city's plans for this area. And, you know, we feel that we've uh, addressed those, uh, and with the, the additional modification of the road diet, as it were, uh, along Cemetery Street being that it does only have one feeder. It helps to provide some of the additional public amenity of the on-street parking and allow us to, to tune up the sidewalk a little bit.
Right, it really cleans it up. You know, you can, today, you know, traffic is weaving from one side to the other depending on where they're going. In the future, you're in one lane. There's no weaving. It's, it's much calmer and much narrower and allows for a better experience in a buffered bike lane.
Okay, Attorney Blank, we'll turn it back to you to wrap it up.
So, so I think that's, so we're just waiting on the, the, the finals on the peer reviews for traffic and architecture. We'll, we'll have, I'm sure we'll have some, some tweaks. Um, but we hope that, um, you, you know, in consulting with your staff, that ideally the first meeting in February, if not your, your, your second meeting in February, we can be on for a, uh, a public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.